The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Combs. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sonnier. Alderwoman Cox Antwee. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Boy.
Present.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Cox Antwee. Alderwoman Keys. Twelfth, present, you have corn.
A corn being present will be led in an opening reflection from Dharmesh Sharma with BAP St. Louis as Dwali approaches on Monday, October 20th, 2025.
The verses you just heard were from the Shanti Pad, a sacred prayer for peace. Here is its meaning in English. May peace radiate there in the whole sky as well as in vast ethereal space everywhere. May peace radiate, may peace rain all over this earth, in water and in all herbs, trees, and other creepers. May peace flow through the whole universe.
May there be peace in our being and may there always exist in all, peace and peace alone. Peace, peace and peace to us and all beings. May this peace guide our thoughts, words, and actions every day. May peace be with us all today and always. And we just want to say a special thank you on behalf of BAPS for giving us the opportunity to come and share this prayer for peace with all of you. Thank you.
If members of the Board would like to come to the steps to get a picture together.
Hey, Michael. Michael.
I did add something to the script. I just put the notes for how to reconsider for motion. It's been there. Do you need to tear it off? I can tear it off. I just.
We will dispense with line item four, any introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the 10th.
Testing, thank you.
Testing.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I would like to ask my colleagues and everyone for a moment of silence in my honor of my honored guest, Ms. Anne Voss, who was a pillar in the 26th Ward in the West End neighborhood. When I first ran in 2012, she was one of the shortlist of people that I was told to speak with. And Ms. Voss, to the contrary of what a lot of people like to highlight, which is gentrification in neighborhoods, Mary Ann, I'm sorry, Mary Ann is her daughter Anne Voss, taught me stories of how her and Marie Fowler and my grandfather worked together to bring communities together, to foster inclusion and open the doors in the West End neighborhood, and how she was proud of the work that they did then and was hoping that I could be here in a gap to continue to work. And I hope that I made her proud many times when I saw her still living on the historically black private street in the city of St. Louis Windermere Place. She would often tell me that. And so, to her daughter Mary Ann and her granddaughter, I can't wait to meet you all in person. I'm so sorry for your loss and for the entire Voss family. And with that, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Anne Voss.
We could please stand and bow our heads for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Today, as my honored guest, I would like to have business owner and I think one of the many trailblazers in the downtown area that's doing really good work, Mr. John Burglin, who is up in the gallery, as well as I would like to have all of the hardworking men and women of the Streets Department that have been working overtime before we go into winter to have done a lot of repaving in the 14th. And I know that I've seen them over in the 9th Ward as well, but they work very hard, they're underpaid, and I appreciate them. I've been on Sean and Kent, including Max Smith, but I'm glad that we finally get around to it. So, thank you to the actual hard workers that are getting it done, and thank you, Mr. John Burglin, for being.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, October 10th, 2025.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, October 10th, 2025.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we approve the minutes from Friday, October 10th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, C, and D of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for reappointment to the Senior Citizens Service Fund Board, the reappointment of William Seedorf. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Kara Spencer, Mayor.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Senior Citizens Service Fund Board.
Thank you. I would move that we accept the mayor's appointment of William Seedorf to the Senior Citizens Service Fund Board.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we approve Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Senior Citizens Service Fund Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me.
Alderwoman Boy has her hand raised.
Alderwoman from the 13th.
Yes, Madam Chair and the Board, I appreciate the mayor bringing the people before us, but this shows even more so why we need to have people on these boards that's just not sitting on these boards, and they're not from North St. Louis. They don't represent our seniors in North St. Louis. And so, it's interesting to me how we don't have people from our communities that are seniors, intelligent, that can speak in regards to what needs to happen. And I'm just, I'm not understanding, and we're turning in names and we don't get anything back.
Are you asking for the nomination to be sent to committee, or are you wanting to inquire of the Alderman from the 9th?
If they need to send it to a committee to vet, please.
Alderman from the 9th, are you willing to send to committee?
I'd be happy to, but I do want to make a point of inquiry, I suppose, that we did just vote on it, so I'm a little confused.
Yeah, we were in the middle of a motion. Alderman from the 9th is correct.
But nobody recognized my hand.
The camera wasn't on, so it didn't pop up for us to be able to see it.
So, you know, if we need to roll it back, I'm not going to argue. I think we can move it to committee. My question would be which committee would the Alderwoman like this to be sent to?
Point of order. Point of order.
Alderwoman from the 12th, please state your point of order.
So, we have to roll it back. We can't, we have to first roll the motion back.
Correct.
And we'll draw the motion in the second.
Yes, we are about to do that. So, Alderman, having voted on the prevailing side, do you want to do a motion to reconsider the appointment?
That would be the way to do it. So, yes, I'll do a motion to reconsider the appointment.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderman from the 4th, that we reconsider the appointment of the mayors to this Senior Citizens Service Fund Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 9th, you are now recognized on the appointment if you would like to inquire of the Alderwoman from the 13th.
With, I think I'll just skip to this. I think we know where this should go, and I'd like to move that we send the disappointment to the Health and Human Development Committee.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderman from the 4th, that we send Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Senior Services Service Fund Board to the Health and Human Development Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District, the reappointment of James Dwyer, the reappointment of Cal Bozoen, the reappointment of Jack Straub III, and the appointment of Amy Ruffner. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Kara Spencer, Mayor.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on Mayor Spencer's appointments to the Central West End Community Improvement.
Thank you. I move that we accept the mayor's appointments of these four individuals to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we approve Mayor Spencer's appointments to the Central West End Community Improvement District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 43, sponsored by Alderman Browning, an ordinance establishing a sales tax reimbursement account in support of project located at 3942 The Cleet Avenue, approving a development and performance agreement related to such projects, authorizing execution thereof. Board Bill 84, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimant and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor to submit a 2026 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the mayor and comptroller to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipt of the 2026 Community Development Block Grant, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solution Grant, and Housing Opportunities for Person with AIDS, authorizing the directors of the Community Development Administration, the Department of Human Services, the Department of Health, to execute contracts as may be necessary to expand funds containing the severability and emergency clauses. Board Bill 85, sponsored by Alderwoman Sonnier, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on various blocks throughout the 7th Ward. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee of board bills.
To the HUD's committee, Board Bill 83 and 84, to Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee, Board Bill 85, that's the extent of reference to committee of board bills.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of HUD's committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 63, sponsored by Alderwoman Cox Antwee, an ordinance recommended by the planning commission on June 17th, 2025, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from F Neighborhood Commercial District to C Multiple Family Dwelling District in City Block 1418, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block 1418 containing emergency clause. Board Bill 80, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 69056 concerning the city's participation in the Property Assessment Clean Energy Act and enacting a new ordinance regarding the same, to enable the city to join the Missouri Clean Energy District in order to provide an additional authority, I'm sorry, additional authorized entity through which owners of property within the city may obtain financing for energy efficiency or renewable energy improvements to their property pursuant to Missouri's Property Assessment Clean Energy Act and stating the steps to be taken by the city in connection wherewith and the activities such district may conduct in the city as a member of such district. Board Bill 82, as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance authorizing the comptroller of the city of St. Louis to execute a contract for the sale of real estate, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the city of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of $275,000 and other good and valuable consideration, a quitclaim deed to remise, release, and forever quitclaim until 900 North Tucker Building LLC, a Missouri limited liability company, its successors, and assign certain city-owned property located in City Block 534, which property is commonly known as 1134 and 1138 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive in the city of St. Louis. The following board bills were reported out of Public Infrastructure and Utilities with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 53, sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to calm the floor traffic on the 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, and 4600 blocks of quarter. Board Bill 67, sponsored by Alderman Browning, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic in the 9th Ward. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Development with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 78, committee sub, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Browning, and Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance updating the Forestry Division's regulation relating to weeds, native plants, and other vegetation in the city of St. Louis containing definition, reporting, abatement enforcement, and severability provisions. Board, I'm sorry, the following board bill was reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 62, as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderman Devote, an ordinance regulating the operation of golf courts upon the streets, alleys, and public right-of-ways within the city of St. Louis. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
Board bills for perfection consent.
We have none.
We can dispense with line items 15 and 16, board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 68, sponsored by Alderman Browning and Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance renewing the previous blighting determination made by ordinance number 66847 and ordinance number 66985, and as renewed by ordinance number 68754 and ordinance number 70119, ordinance number 71214, for the Cortex West redevelopment areas such as Cortex West Redevelopment Corporation can continue to exercise his rights to use eminent domain granted by the city to complete the redevelopment plan.
Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 68.
Thank you. I would move that we perfect Board Bill 68.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we perfect Board Bill 68. Alderman, you may.
Thank you. Board Bill 68 is a renewal of a development tool for the Cortex District. It is required by Missouri statute to be renewed every five years, and it is just so that they can continue developing the 200-acre area in the heart of our city. They were charged with developing that area way back in the early 2000s in an agreement with the city, and since then, they have brought hundreds of companies, thousands of jobs, a lot of new tax revenue for the city, as well as making this area a center for innovation and opportunities. So, I'm happy to take any questions about this bill. I've had an opportunity to have conversations with almost all of you about it, but would be happy to answer any additional questions anyone has.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the Board, I won't go into a discussion. I voted against this bill originally when it came forth. I will continue to vote against it. I really have a problem that we granted the Cortex eminent domain, which is something we usually keep for within our city. For that reason alone, I don't deny that there is a wonderful development going on within the Cortex. Things that look really great, but I really do have a problem with us granting and giving eminent domain to a private entity, along with the TIF and a lot of other things that went along with that development. For those reasons, I am going to vote no, and will be voting no on the roll call.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman from the 9th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, and just thank you to all my colleagues who have taken the time to engage in discussion about this. I want to make sure that I do answer any questions people have. One thing that did come up in the discussions was that this is a blighting tool, and while it does have eminent domain related to it, it's worth noting that the Cortex District is located in an area where there was not and is not any active use in any of these buildings where they're using this tool. In particular, they never, ever use it to displace anybody. It's always meant as a legal tool to consolidate and clear titles and more or less property development type things. So, I understand that the position of the Alderwoman from the 12th, but I have utmost confidence that the decisions being made in this area continue to benefit not only the community, but all of St. Louis. With that, I humbly ask for your favorable consideration, and I close. Thank you.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 9th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we perfect Board Bill 68. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Combs. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonnier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cox Antwee. Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Boy.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Cox Antwee. 11 aye votes and 3 no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 9th, perfect Board Bill 68.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 43, 64, 65, 71, 72, 73, as amended on the floor, and 74.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I'd like to place Board Bill 43 and 74 on the informal calendar, as I get ahead of E&amp;A.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bills 43 and 74 on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill's informal calendar.
So noted.
Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Board Bill 64, 65, 71, 72, 73, as amended on the floor.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Combs.
Sure, aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Devote.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonnier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Cox Antwee. Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boy.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderwoman Cox Antwee. Alderman Aldridge. 13 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to third reading and finally pass the formal bills. Third reading and final passage of Board Bills.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 20, reported the finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill 64, 65, 71, 72, and 73, as amended on the floor.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature here to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions in reference to committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 22. Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoption.
We have none.
Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Having voted on the prevailing side, I move to reconsider the vote on resolution number 129.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we can reconsider the vote on resolution 129. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are now. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are now recognized on Resolution 129.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to embank Resolution Number 129 in honor of Congressman William Bill Lacy Clay.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we thank Courtesy Resolution 129. Is there any objection? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution 129 calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 25, announcement.
Tuesday, October 21, 2025, HUD will have a meeting in the Kennedy Room at 11:00 a.m. Thursday, October 23, 2025, Health and Human Development will have a meeting via webinar at 9:00 a.m. Friday, October 24, 2025, four ward meeting in the chambers at 10:00 a.m. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I have a couple, and then there's so many more, but you can follow me on Facebook after the meeting to get those. But again, thank you to my colleagues for embanking Resolution 129 in honor of our forever first congressman of the first congressional district, William Bill Clay Sr. There is a memorial for him tomorrow, keeping their family continuously lifted up in prayer. It's now he has joined his beloved wife in glory, keeping their children, grandchildren, and entire family and communities, generations of communities in prayer. Tomorrow, Saturday, October 18, at 11:00 a.m., at the University of Missouri St. Louis and the Blanche Two-Hill Performing Arts Center, that's One Two-Hill Circle, St. Louis, there will be a celebration of his life and legacy here and the immeasurable mark him and his family left on this, on the, not just the city of St. Louis, but the world, the nation and the world for that matter. And then tonight, in the 9th and 10th wards, where we share in the Makers District, is Delish on Delmar. This is from 5:00 to 10:00 in the Delmar Makers District, Esca Florentine, Nixte Cellar Cigar Lounge, A&amp;O Co., Deli Divine, Steve's Hot Dogs, The Fountain on Delmar, Too Much Sauce, Guys with Fries, Honey BT, Crooked Boot, which I love, and so many others will come together. My girl Anita will be singing, as well as other artists will be performing. This was an amazing event. This is the second one. I remember when Maxine brought this idea scribbled on a napkin to us, and now to see it come to fruition, and in two years, be the second year rather of us having this. I'm excited for this opportunity to get together, have a break in the monotony and the rebuilding and the repair in that neighborhood that you know was devastated by the May 16 tornado. So if you are looking for dinner plans tonight, come on out. It will be blocked and safe. It's a street fair, Delish on Delmar from 5:00 to 10:00, and that'll be in between Union and Academy.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you. So yeah, tonight, Delish on Delmar. Next weekend, I'd like to announce on Saturday, October 25, is the Central West End Halloween Party. It is always a spooktacular time, so please come. It is all day, but 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. is the costume contest, which is honestly my favorite event of the year, because you get to see the real creativity of people, and it's always a really great time. So again, Saturday, October 25, all day, but 8:00 to 10:00 p.m., come down to the Central West End and have a great time.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse. Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alderwoman from the 8th for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we use the Alderwoman from the 8th for necessary absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn Friday, October 24, 2025, in the Board of Alderman Chambers at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we adjourn until Friday, October 25, in the Board of Alderman Chambers at 10:00 a.m. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.